All right, Mayor, you can go ahead and start the meeting whenever you're ready.
Please state your present when I call your name, Mayor Ritter. Present.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Present.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Okay, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And we will have the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening to the agenda.
Okay, we have two presentations this evening, and the first one is a proclamation declaring June 3, 2020 as Vista Unified School District Class 2020 Day in the City of Vista. And, all right, you know what? Who has that proclamation? You realize that I don't have it?
There is a copy in your agenda packet, but it's rather small writing, so let me know if you want me to...
Hold on a second.
Have someone else read it?
Okay, I got it here. Okay, here we go. Oh, my glasses. Very small print. Whereas the Vista Unified School District graduating class of 2020 has become more unified as a community, despite the disruption to their final year of high school as a result of unprecedented circumstances. Whereas the graduating class of 2020 has maintained its resilience, perseverance, empathy, and creativity while negotiating a future very different from the one they started the year with. Whereas the graduating class of 2020 continues to consistently display the courage to persevere and be open to new learning experiences amidst the uncertainty of their current and future environment. The graduating class of 2020 will enter the world with a sense of strength and compassion for each other as they navigate their post-secondary future. And whereas the graduating class of 2020 has been tested and has grown in their confidence and conviction to contribute their unique strengths to a community in need. Whereas we observe the week of May 31, 2020 through June 6, 2020, by taking time to recognize our senior class of 2020 and acknowledge their accomplishments during their educational endeavors, or careers, and educational careers. So now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of the Vista City Council join the Board of Trustees of the Vista Unified School District and hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 3, 2020, as Vista Unified School District Class of 2020 Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to all those graduates this year. It's a tough year for graduation, but we're very proud of all of them. So that is that proclamation.
Mayor, I actually have a public comment on that, if I could go ahead and read that?
Sure.
Okay, it's from Kathleen Libbet. "Those of us who work to support public policies that help our youth grow up in environments that are safe and supportive of healthy lifestyle choices appreciate the council's recognition of Vista's Class of 2020. These young people have been challenged as never before as traditions to which they look forward, proms, graduation ceremonies, struggles with remote learning, clubs, social groups, peer interactions, and were swept out from under them. Likely someday, they will look back at how they managed to rise to the challenge on behalf of protecting those more at risk of contracting and possibly becoming seriously ill from this viral epidemic. Grandparents and those suffering from other comorbid conditions. Challenges build our character, and there is truth to saying that the strongest steel is forged by the hottest fire." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is our City Manager Patrick Johnson. He's going to provide our COVID-19 update.
Thank you again, and good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I will again provide you with a COVID-19 update. Since there will be a great deal of discussion later this evening in Item D3 and D4 discussing businesses, marketing, and the potential reopening, I will leave my comments brief and just to the facts of, from the state and the county. So, a week ago, as most of you know, the state approved the San Diego County's plan to move further into Stage 2, which allowed people to go to restaurants and retail businesses and actually dine in or shop at those businesses. So that was a good thing. And then yesterday, the state released new guidelines for churches and other places of worship to open. So that means that religious services and funerals could host up to a maximum of 100 people or 25% of their building capacity, whichever is less. So that is another step in the right direction. There's a lot more information on the state's website in terms of the guidelines for churches and mosques and synagogues and how they can deal with the in-person services. So I'd encourage people, if they are interested, to go to the state's website on COVID-19 for more information. So that was yesterday. And then today, the governor announced that in most counties, and these are counties that self-attest saying that they can abide by the guidelines of the sanitation and supplies and all the protocols, saying that barber shops and salons can reopen as of midnight tonight. So San Diego County is included in this group of counties that can self-attest, and that was reported on today. The guidelines are posted again on the state's website, the COVID-19 website, but in essence, for the person going to get a haircut, it would involve both the person cutting the hair and the person getting their haircut wearing a mask. And then there's other sanitizing protocols that the facility needs to take care of, as well as a protocol that they need to attest to and post at their establishment. And then lastly, the state mentioned today that they are going to provide tomorrow information on summer camps and youth recreation camps. And so we are very interested in what they have to say as it will affect how we proceed going forward in the summer months for our recreation programs. So we'll be listening intently to see how it affects Vista. So it appears that, at this point in time, with the fact that salons are able to open up, the county is starting that entry phase into Phase 3, or Stage 3, as they call it. So Stage 2 was last week and the week before, and now Stage 3 is beginning to happen. As it relates to the county, today they announced that one-on-one instructions for sports would be allowed. So that means somebody could go get a golf lesson, somebody could go get a soccer lesson, one student, one instructor. And they said this is the start of the process for sports leagues to get back into allowing to be played later on in the summer. In terms of the city, all of you know, but I want to make the public know that we have been working on our physical distancing requirements for both the internal and external areas of our city facilities. We're trying to comply with the county health guidelines, and we've been making modifications to our buildings. Some of that means we've set up Plexi Shield at our front counters. We've marked out all the distancing spots. We've removed furniture from the lobby, done everything we can to abide by the health protocols. And our plan is that we will reopen to the public on Monday, June 8. So our goal is to open up, get back to full service, get back to taking care of the public on a full-service basis. And more information will be shared on that next week. It is very likely that we will have modified hours for the public because we do have a check-in process that we'll have to do for employees. So it may be that we'll open at 8:00 or 8:30 and be open until 4:30 or 5:00, but we'll announce that next week. But very good news, we're going to get back to serving the public on June 8, so we're very happy about that. So those were the brief updates, and I'd turn it back to you, Mayor, if there's any questions.
Do you see any questions? Wave at me, remember, if you have a question, okay? With that, I haven't seen no questions. We'll go to the consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by making a request to the Clerk Secretary at publiccomments@cityofvista.com. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have eight consent items this evening. So would any of the City Council members want to remove an item? I've seen no waving. So if somebody wants to remove an item, I would look for a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Rigby and a second by Councilmember Green. So please, I guess Kathy will do the roll call.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to our public hearings, and we have actually two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the collection of relinquished sewer service charges. Public hearing is now open, and our Finance Director Mike Silvia will be providing the staff report.
So I'm just a minute to come onto the screen here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm having trouble with my video.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move forward with just audio then. I don't want to hold up the meeting. Anyway, good evening. This is an annual recurring item. It's statutorily required by both the Vista Municipal Code and the Buenos Sanitation Code. Specifically, any unpaid sewer charges as of July 1 each year are to be placed on the secured property tax roll. To facilitate this collection, a 2/3 approval of the item's two resolutions is required. Sewer charges fund both operating capital maintenance and replacement activities for the two-way water systems. Typically, more than 92% of the sewer customers do utilize this process, and the required noticing was provided via city website posting and newspaper publication on May 12 and May 19. Staff will continue to collect sewer payments through June 30, and the remaining charges would be applied to the secured property tax roll later in the summer with City Council and Buenos Sanitation District Director approval tonight. So with that, staff's recommendation is to open, conduct, and close the public hearing and approve the two resolutions. This completes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, then I will, then I guess I'll ask if there's anybody that has any comments. Councilmember Franklin, do you have any comments?
Oh, no, I just would add that this is a purely administrative item, and we make arrangement for all of our homeowners who wish to pay their sewer bill via their property tax bill to do so by not remitting their check and allowing the item to be placed on their property tax bill as a convenience to them, and that's what we're doing here. So I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the item as presented by staff.
I have a second.
See no further discussion?
We do need a pause for public comments to be accepted.
Okay, what, three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take a three-minute pause, and then we'll be right back.
All right, Mayor, you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
The opportunity to provide public comment on this item is now closed, and our City Clerk Valdez, please.
Comments received. We did not receive any comments on this item, Mayor.
Okay, then we have a motion by Councilmember Franklin and a second by Deputy Mayor Rigby, so please conduct the roll call vote.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby? Deputy Mayor, oh, there you go. Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That pass is unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to public hearing number two. The next public hearing is to receive public comment on the city's 2020 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, the RTIP update. The public hearing is now open, and Senior Management Analyst Sarah Taylor can provide a presentation. Do you want a presentation? Does everybody want a presentation? Wave if you'd like a presentation. Maybe we don't need one on this. Okay, okay, then we're going to have a presentation by Sarah Taylor, who's our Senior Management Analyst.
Okay, give me just a moment, Sarah, before you start to bring up the presentation. Take, there's a little bit of lapse. Okay, go ahead and start.
Okay. This report is for the Regional Transportation Improvement Program update, known as the RTIP. The RTIP is Sandag's program that includes proposed projects for transit improvements in the San Diego region, including projects that are eligible for Transnet funding. Transnet is the county-wide voter-approved half-cent sales tax distributed to local agencies based on population and miles maintained. Sandag uses the RTIP as their budget document, similar to our six-year capital improvement program. The RTIP is formally updated by Sandag every two years. This will be the update to the Transnet program of projects covering the five-year period from fiscal year 2020, '21 through 2024, '25. This update will be programmed as Amendment Number 14 to the 2018 RTIP. Slide 2 shows the six Vista projects programmed with Transnet funding for this update. Inclusion of projects in the RTIP is required to obtain Transnet funding. The programming for these projects is in line with the upcoming six-year capital improvement program budget. And next slide, Sandag requires each local agency hold a public hearing for Transnet programming changes and for a resolution to be approved by the City Council for each amendment before any updates to the RTIP are accepted. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Okay, are there questions from any of our councilmembers? Maybe I can call on each of you, or you can wave at me, and that would make it easier. Councilmember Contreras, did you have any questions?
You know, I don't have any questions necessarily, but I just want to, you know, thank staff for all the time spent on this. And also, this is a, you know, for the public to know that we're looking at, constantly at the conditions of our roads, of our sidewalks, and trying what is necessary to ensure public safety in that arena. With that, I do move to close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation on this. But thank you so much for the presentation, and I don't know if any of my other colleagues have any questions.
See?
Second to that motion.
Okay, so I don't see any other comments, and so we have a motion by Councilmember Contreras and a second by Councilmember Green. Do we need to take a public comment we received?
Yes, we do.
Three-minute break?
Yes.
Again?
Yes. All right, Mayor, you can start whenever you're ready.
We're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comment on this item is now closed. So Clerk Valdez, could you please share the public comments received?
We did not receive any public comment on this item.
Okay, do any of our councilmembers have any additional comments? If you could wave your hand at me. I don't see any. Okay, with that, then we have a motion by Councilmember Contreras and a second by Councilmember Green. Please conduct a roll call vote.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rigby? Deputy Mayor, there you go. Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Sorry, skipped Councilmember Green.
Aye.
That pass is unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, that would be moving on to our discussion items. Discussion items this evening. Our first one, D1, Fiscal Year 2021 and 21, '22 Capital Project Overview. Senior Management Analyst Sarah Taylor will also be providing the staff report on this.
And give me just a moment to pull up that presentation for those watching at home. It's okay. Your presentation is up, Sarah.
...program, also known as the CIP. We'll be reviewing the projects that we've accomplished in the past year, as well as appropriations for forthcoming years, seeking your feedback on the proposed appropriations. Any direction received tonight will be incorporated into the final CIP budget and will come before council in June for approval. The CIP is a six-year document that is updated every other year. Only the first two years are actually budgeted, and the remaining four years are included for planning purposes. The CIP includes a summary of the funding sources in detail for all the projects. Detail sheets for all new and existing projects with proposed appropriations in the next two years were included in the staff report and will be reviewed in this presentation. There's a number of projects that we have completed this year. I'm just going to review some of the major ones. Some of the completed street projects on Slide 2 include the resurfacing of approximately six miles of city streets with deteriorated surfaces, including streets that carry a significant amount of traffic. As part of the Traffic Congestion Management Project, a right-turn lane was added on Civic Center Drive at Postal Way. This will relieve some congestion for the northbound traffic. A traffic monitoring system was also completed as part of this project to collect vehicle times and speeds and to enable monitoring of traffic conditions in real time. Slide 3 shows completed traffic projects, which includes an upgrade of the Signal Interconnect System south of the 78. This will allow for optimized traffic signal timing and coordination and will improve safety and operations of traffic signals in the southern half of the city. Design for the northern half of the city is complete, and construction is expected to begin early this next fiscal year. Installation of a traffic signal is also recently completed at the intersection of Bovier and Goodwin Drive. As far as sewer projects, on Slide 4, we expect to complete the Vista Village Trunk Sewer Project by the end of this fiscal year. This was a $15 million construction project, which constructed approximately 3,500 linear feet of pipeline, and it will provide significant build-out capacity for North Vista, especially the redeveloped areas of downtown and Paseo-San Jose. Slide 5 highlights the Paseo-San Jose Streetscape Project. We have completed Phases 1 and 2, and Phase 3, the final phase of the project, is expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year. We have been awarded a number of grants for this project, including a second Smart Growth Incentive Program grant of $2.5 million, which will help fund the completion of the project. Slide 6 shows the new projects proposed for this update. All seven projects are sewer-related with two years of appropriations totaling $1.35 million. Vista Sewer Projects include security improvements at the Buena Vista Pump Station. This station has experienced vandalism and break-ins and $350,000 is proposed to make needed security improvements, which include increased lighting and improvements to the perimeter fencing. The Raceway Pump Station has been experiencing a significant buildup of fat soils and grease. Study is proposed to evaluate the cause of the buildup with an approximate cost of $75,000. In addition, an emergency storage basin located at the Raceway Pump Station is in poor condition with groundwater infiltrating the basin and creating standing water. $250,000 is proposed for the Raceway Emergency Oversploil Basin Repair Project. The Vista Sewer Pipelines Project will address sewer segments that are in need of rehab or replacement, which have been identified in the city's asset management plan. $50,000 is proposed in fiscal year 2122 for design of the project with planned construction costs in the following year of $1.45 million. The Hacienda Drive Trunk Sewer Project will rehabilitate the remaining portion of Vista's main trunk line from Vista Village Drive to La Tortuga. This project includes the installation of sewer-in-place pipe to repair ductile iron pipelines that are subject to corrosion. An appropriation of $500,000 is proposed in fiscal year 2122 for the early phases of the project, with an additional $3 million anticipated in the following year to complete the project. There are two proposed projects for the Buena Sewer District. A fat oils and grease abatement study of $75,000 for the Buena Creek Pump Station and a pipeline point repair and replacement project, which will rehab or replace sewer segments in need as identified in the district's asset management plan. An appropriation of $50,000 is proposed for fiscal year 2122 with anticipated planned expenditures of $1.45 million in the following fiscal year. Slide 7 shows the ongoing projects with proposed appropriations for park and recreation and public facilities. The Bud Williamson Park Upgrade Project includes new appropriations of $2.35 million. This will be, the funding is from available park development fees and this will fully fund the project. Award for the construction of contract for this project will be coming before council in June. Just over $3 million is proposed for the Paula Vista Project. This includes a grant that was awarded from the State Park Grant Fund in the amount of $2.3 million. Public Facilities includes continued spending on the ADA Transition Plan Implementation with a proposed appropriation of $50,000 for each fiscal year and $4.2 million for the replacement of the Public Works Facility. This new facility will replace the current operations building, which is over 40 years old. Multiple funding sources for this project include available general fund capital, public facility fees, and sewer capital replacement. Design for this project should be completed by November and completion of the facility is anticipated by the end of the 2022 calendar year. On Slide 8, over $14 million in street improvement projects are proposed for the next two fiscal years. This includes $3.1 million for the street construction and overlay project and $1.25 million for slurry seal. This is the maintenance side of the road improvement contract. $1.42 million is proposed for construction of new sidewalks in high pedestrian areas and $1 million for the Traffic Congestion Management Program, which will be used to implement high priority projects proposed in the updated Traffic Congestion Management Plan. $4 million is proposed for the Townsite Complete Streets Project. This project will transform Townsite Drive and West Los Angeles Drive, accommodating all users by constructing sidewalk, traffic circles, curb extensions, bike lanes, sharrows, and high-visibility crosswalks. The city was awarded a $3.87 million grant, which funds the majority of this project. $3.55 million has been proposed for residential street improvements for the next two years. Funding for this project is from the SB 1 Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Ongoing sewer projects on Slide 9 include two years of contributions to the Encino Wastewater Authority Capital Improvement Project in the amounts of $11.3 million for City of Vista Sewer and $3.6 million for the Buena Sanitation District. The Encino Wastewater Authority provides sewage treatment for six member agencies, including the Vista, City of Vista, and Buena Sanitation District. Other ongoing sewer projects with new appropriations include sewer access and capacity improvement projects. Slide 10 provides a summary of the proposed appropriations by category for the next two fiscal years. The $48.8 million in proposed appropriation includes the seven new projects as well as the 20 ongoing projects with new appropriations that were discussed as part of this presentation. Proposed appropriations for the next two years are largely funded through revenues already received by the city through development impact fees, user fees, and awarded grants. Appropriations related to anticipated revenues, including transnet and SB 1 gas tax, have been adjusted based on anticipated revenue revisions related to COVID-19 impacts. This completes the overview of the projects. The final CIP budget will be brought before council in June. I am available for any questions that the council has.
Okay, so do anybody have any questions on this before we go to public comments? Do you want to, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any particular questions that I want to ask as much as I want to say thank you for this report. Very comprehensive, I appreciate that very much. And some of these projects, we've been waiting a long time to have done and I'm looking forward to seeing them all over the city. We're hitting every corner of the city with projects to enhance our community and this is, you know, some of us weren't always in favor of all the taxes that we get slammed with, but this is really showing the representation and where our money is coming back to us in Vista. So I want to say thank you and great job and I'm looking forward to these projects getting done.
Anybody else? Councilmember Green?
I really just want to echo, number one, what Deputy Mayor said and also just kind of throw out my level of excitement about two new parks in Vista. Bud Williamson, we've done a lot of work on, I know it's going to be coming back in June. And then also Paula Vista Park, I mean, staff worked super hard and got us $2.3 million in grant funds, that's amazing. The other thing I want to let North Vista know is the signal interconnect, maybe you didn't hear that, but supposed to be done by the end of 2020. So the signals and interconnect should really help out our traffic flow at Vista Village in South Santa Fe, kind of where that big buildup typically happens. And then lastly, I just wanted to commend staff again, $3.8 million in grant funds for the Townsite Street Project. So, you know, our staff, just in this presentation, got us over $6 million in grant funding. So kudos to you guys working hard for the citizens of Vista and helping us get all these projects done for our community. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Seeing no other comments, we're going to, we have to go to a short recess to allow public comment to be received. The comments can be emailed to publiccomments@cityofvista.com. So I'll, we'll do a three-minute recess and then we will be back with the public comments. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Okay, we're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comments on this item is closed. City Clerk Valdez, can you share the public comments if we received any?
We did not receive any on this item.
Okay, then I will go back to the, my council and ask if you have any additional comments or questions. So do I, I guess I'll go through everybody, how about that? Deputy Mayor Rigby, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, how about Councilmember Franklin?
No, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Franklin?
No, thank you.
Oh, I already asked you, didn't I? Sorry. Who'd I miss? Councilmember Contreras?
I have no questions or comments.
I don't think I have a motion though, do I?
No, we don't have a motion.
So I would entertain a motion and a second.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the CIP budget as proposed.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilmember Franklin?
I second that.
Second by Deputy Mayor Rigby and third by Councilmember Contreras. Please do a roll call vote for us. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously. Okay, that closes that item out and the next item is item D4, COVID-19 Impact on the City, Citizens.
Run D2.
Did I mess up my page? That's what, oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. Okay. D2 is Amendment to this Public Employees Retirement Services Contract. Human Resources Director Dolores Gascom will be providing the staff report. I apologize, I went a page too far.
We'll just give us a moment to bring Dolores on. There she is.
Okay. Mayor and City Council, when the City Council approved an MOU with the Vista Firefighters Association in 2018, that agreement included language that the fire association members would move from the CalPERS survivor benefit level three to coverage at the level four level. These survivor benefits are distributed to a member's survivors in the death prior to retirement. Adding the benefit requires the city to amend its CalPERS contract. CalPERS requires that the following items be placed on the agenda of a public meeting of the City Council as part of the contract amendment process, a resolution of intention, and an ordinance adopted by the City Council. These two items have been included as Exhibits 1 and 2. We're before you now because CalPERS further requires the contract amendment not be listed on the consent calendar, so it has been placed on the agenda as a discussion item. The resolution of intention and the ordinance are the first of two steps required of the city by CalPERS to amend its contract. The amendment ordinance will be brought back before the City Council at its meeting on June 23rd for a second reading. So that concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, do I have any questions from any members of our council? And seeing no questions, then we'll have a short recess for public comment to be received and the comments can be emailed to publiccomments@cityofvista.com. It's comments, C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S, at cityofvista.com. It's comments, C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S, at cityavista.com. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Okay, we're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comment on this item is now closed. Please share any public comments to our city clerk.
No public comments were received.
Okay, so then I'll go back to my council again, see if anybody has any additional comments. And if they don't have any comments, then I would like a motion and a second. So, and I don't, oh, Councilmember Green?
I don't have any necessary comments. I was just going to move that we accept staff's recommendation on their resolution and also introduce the City Council ordinance as presented in the report.
Let's put in a second there.
Okay, I have a motion, second, I see no further comments from the council, so please do a roll call vote. Okay, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is our, is D3, our third discussion items. Vista Economic Recovery Plan Enhancement Recommendations. Economic Development Director Kevin Ham will be providing the staff report. And so we'll give you a minute to get Kevin up and running. All right, Kevin, your PowerPoint's up.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. At the April 28th meeting, the council directed staff to identify additional opportunities for the city to assist small businesses other than a loan program. These new opportunities are in addition to the actions already being undertaken in the Business Economic Recovery Plan, which is Exhibit 2 in this report. These existing activities include many efforts to support the Vista business community and a brief overview of some of those elements are as follows. Can you go to Slide 2 for me, please? Are you on Slide 2? Perfect, thank you. So, we have created a shared Innovate 78 information portal. This is helpful because all five cities are able to stay on top of this to make sure that our business community is informed of what's taking place as soon as we know it. We've launched a takeout essential business website. We've created a Economic Recovery Task Force, which is using our Vista Economic Development Strategy Committee. We eliminated the Central Vista Business Improvement District fees for fiscal year 2021. We are conducting virtual VistaCare's visits and now we've had about 270 really good conversations with our businesses. And we're undertaking regional efforts to secure grants, programs, and benefits for Vista and North County. Can you please go to Slide 2, which is Option A? Option A costs $40,000 and this would be undertaken by Humble Pie. I should note that each of these efforts will support what we've already undertaken and I will go through each of these in depth. If you have any questions, I will stop on each slide. And if you have any questions for me, please go ahead and ask. Humble Pie is a local company that is currently undertaking our downtown Vista website activities. This effort is really to market, promote, and assist getting out the message that our Vista businesses are open. This includes social media, traditional media to the extent that it continues, a loyalty program for businesses that's simple to implement, that increases foot traffic to their location. This is for restaurants, retailers, and breweries, and this is citywide. It also includes standing up several safe and simple events where people can feel safe attending an activity, whether it's a retailer or a restaurant. And it also includes a shop local holiday pop-up program. Now I will stop there and see if there's any questions. Hearing none, I will move on to the next. Option B, oh, I'm sorry, did I hear one?
Mayor, did you have something? No, I just, I don't see anybody, anybody that has any questions. Is this, is this something that, are these choices that we have or are these things that are going on already?
These are all options. If the council decides to move forward with all of the options, it will just cost a little over $107,000, of which about $85,000 would be coming from a new source of funds and the other are existing funds that we currently have. So the council may choose all of these, none of these, or a few of these. Staff is recommending that we implement all of them.
Okay.
So moving on to Option B, this costs $12,250. This is an augmentation of an existing contract that we have with Rising Tide. If the first was all about marketing, this is all about public relations. It's really to improve the content, reach, and saturation of our Vista business messages. Many cities, as we do, contract with professionals just like these to manage the development of the content and messages with the media. They have relationships with the media, so not only are they professional writers, but they're able to get those messages placed. Many of our surrounding cities use contractors just like this for all of the activities that we're recommending. So the first one is to have someone professionally write the content and put together and create our economic development newsletter and getting it out four times per year. The next is to create 12 business-related blog posts, and this would be one per month. And this would be like we currently have. So for example, in the last couple of days, we had an article come out about one of our companies in North County called Lica Biosystems. That company and that article was put together by Rising Tide for us and we were able to get that out to the media and place in the media. The one last thing that they would do for us is undertake business-related social media posts, at least three per week. Again, they are proficient at this, they're used to doing this, and so this would augment an existing contract that is $12,000. So it'd make it just about $24,250. Now I will stop there and see if there's any questions. All right.
See, nobody's waving at me.
All righty. So moving on to Slide 4, which is Option 4. This includes a combination of both staff time as well as a contractor. So some of the options that you will see before you today include just staff time, a contractor with oversight of staff, or a combination of both. This one is a combination of both. This would be to complete a special edition of our Vista. We had completed a version in April. As everyone knows, things have changed. We'd like to take this, our Vista, and turn it into a business edition with four pages inside. We already have a writer looking at some of the content. We're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to write a section in here as well. And the idea is that this would reach 34,000 readers that we currently have. And so this would be a good opportunity for $12,371 really to reach our entire community of the 34,000 readers we have. Any questions about this?
I have one. Would you charge the businesses then to be in this or would it be, you just recognize the businesses, all of them?
So the idea is that we would have four pages in the publication that would simply talk about how residents can support businesses. So for example, I saw an article the other day that, you know, some of the businesses downtown have supported baseball teams or other types of activities. And, you know, now is the time maybe that folks can go back out and support them. So it would really provide an opportunity for us to use this magazine to market our business community to that readership and communicate the message that now it's time to go back and shop and support these businesses.
And would the businesses have like an ad or something for, so it would recognize the businesses, all of them, or not just, not just stuff to read, but pictures of business, you know, the ads, like an ad for each business or something?
We've, we will be using the existing publication that was already put together and essentially removing four pages in that document that had recreation-related information. So the advertisers and those that are in there are in the existing publication.
Mayor, this publication would be more about promoting business in general and shopping Vista and supporting local businesses as opposed to individual businesses and publication for individual businesses.
But there, because in the regular publication, there's not very many, there's not very many ads in there for businesses, but, you know, I like, a lot of the businesses that are open, the restaurants, it'd be nice to have an opportunity to, for them to buy advertising maybe in there, I don't know, it's just an idea, but it's going to be a special business edition of our Vista that I would think you would have some businesses in there. Like, you know, I look at Carlsbad's newsletter, or their, they have a lot of, a lot of their businesses listed in there and, you know, different business information, so.
And the thought, as opposed to something like maybe the Chamber of Commerce would do where they would sell ads, this was more about just the promotion of businesses and not charging businesses for the content.
But, but would you list, would there be advertising for the business then? That's what I'm asking. Is it just a write-off saying support Vista and shop Vista or is it, or is it something that you're going to highlight businesses so people will see the businesses out there?
Yeah, it's more about a promotion of all businesses and Vista as opposed to a general focusing on two or three businesses and not focusing on others in the community.
Okay, okay. Okay, nobody else has any questions on that, I guess? Oh, Councilmember Green?
Yeah, I just had a question, kind of, you know, related to what Mayor Ritter was saying is, I would like a list of our businesses, you know, like, hey, these businesses are back open for business and list them. I mean, whether it's on one page, just like Vista businesses with a list, I don't know, I'm not a graphic designer, but I would assume we would be able to fit them on a couple pages, you know, just something with their names on it that they don't have to pay for, where they see, hey, the city did send out this magazine to all, you know, what'd you say, 34,000 people that it's in circulation to, at no charge to them. I mean, I think that's kind of, as a council, what we were looking to do is say, hey, how can we help our businesses without hurting their pocketbook? So I'm all for having a business edition magazine that is advertising the junk out of our specific businesses, not just saying come shop Vista, but come shop all businesses and give every business the opportunity to get into the magazine. I mean, we don't, we'll let them all get into it if they all fill out an application and we'll make it as many pages as it needs in order to highlight all of our businesses and say, this is the Vista is Open Business Magazine Edition or something and allow them to put a, you know, coupon or a special or something. I just think it's a great opportunity to hit our entire city and why not let them know every business that's out there? I mean, it might cost a little more to make the magazine, but I think it'd be very beneficial to our businesses and kind of show Vista and Vistims across the city what we have to offer. So that's my two cents.
If the council approves that Vista is Open Activity Promotion, we will put that in there and that will be a platform that all businesses can be located on, put in opportunity to advertise their business for free and get that information out as well. Thus far, we've thought that the Chamber of Commerce would write a section that we would be talking about the businesses that have really stood up and made a difference during the challenge that we've had and how they've helped our community. Again, how the residents might be able to support them and go out and shop with them and a couple of other ideas in addition to the Vista is Open so all businesses get recognized and advertised.
Now, my thing is the, the network and the list of contacts we have is different than what the chamber has. I don't want to, you know, I don't necessarily want to rely on the chamber to do the business. I'm, you know, as the city, I'd like to do something city-specific for the businesses and, I mean, I don't know, I don't know where my council's at with it, but that's kind of where I'm leaning. I think I said something there, city manager.
Councilmember Green, there's two things you said. One is you wanted a listing of every business. I don't know, and then you made a comment about them filling out a form to provide to the city and then that way they could get into those pages. But this is something the council wanted to do. What we rely on is the business license data that we have. And on that, we have about 5,000 businesses within the city. Some of them home occupancy, some of them are retail businesses, restaurants, you name it. So for us to be able to pare that list down into two pages or something of that nature so people could read it, it might be a bit of a challenge with 5,000 businesses.
Well, I think.
How many pages would, I'm sorry, how many pages would be reasonable though to list 5,000 businesses? Could we have a 10-page business directory and break it down into sections? I mean, we create the size of the magazine, I would think, but anyway, I'll leave it to my other council.
And it depends on, it just depends on the timing and how much we want to spend per page count to be able to send out to the residents. That's all.
And again, I just want to say that we will create that website where everyone can be located and so it's going to be easy for them to upload their information, put their information on there. So if we direct them, we'll make sure that that information is relevant and that it's actually timely. A publication maybe on the shelf might go old quickly, but if we direct people to a website, they'll get the fresh, most recent content.
Oh, Councilmember Contreras, I see, I'll call you in a second, but that'll be fine except a lot of people, and it may be seniors, but a lot of people don't have websites and don't have, aren't, and if it's called a special business edition of our Vista, you know, that would be, I would think we would have businesses in there, you know, not just shop Vista, but we'd have businesses listed. It's fine, the ones that have been in business, you know, they've been ported so far, that would be good, but I just think somehow we need to promote the businesses that are open. Councilmember Contreras, I'll go to you.
No, you know, I agree about, how many businesses do we think we can highlight, you know, that staff was thinking about highlighting?
So if we're talking about those businesses that kind of have stepped up and made a difference, whether that's large ones like Dr. Bronner's or the Food Bank or those that have made masks when previously they made sport clothing, you know, we probably have 10 or 15 companies like that. Those are just the ones that have kind of gone above and beyond to make those products and donate them or have been involved.
And so, is basically the issue with trying to add more businesses to being, for them to be highlighted, is it just a logistics as far as difficulty listing all of them on those pages? I mean, I like the idea of having them listed. I mean, maybe we even break it up by district in several publications. I mean, I don't know, but I definitely see where Mayor Ritter and Councilmember Green are coming from. And I think it would be good to highlight more than, you know, a handful of businesses if there's a way to do that.
I think in our.
So those are my comments, but I definitely think that they have a valid point.
When we discussed this issue internally, one of the things we didn't want to do was eliminate businesses and only focus on the ones that may be most familiar, that we know. So that's why we were trying to look at it as a broad approach and talking more about business in general as opposed to leaving somebody out or omitting somebody in a certain district.
My only thing about that is the large businesses don't need, don't need to be promoted or, it's the small businesses that are the ones that are struggling and that need to, people know that they're open again or that, you know, that would be my, and I think as a, like a business person, because I always have been, that's what I'm trying to think of, how we help those businesses. So, Councilmember Contreras, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I thought you were done.
No, no, I think you have some really valid points that I think we need to consider as a council and I know Councilmember Franklin looks like he has some ideas as well. But, you know, I mean, it's a very valid point, you know, Dr. Bronner's, all these larger businesses, they, they market their businesses great. You know, I'm concerned about the small businesses that have been here in Vista for over, you know, some of them a few decades at this point, and I want to make sure that they get noticed as well. Like, hey, you know what? They're back open, you know, you can dine in, you can take out, something like that, just because I know we have a lot of mom and pop businesses that have been here for such a long time and this would be a great opportunity for the city to, to recognize them. So I don't know what can be done in the timeframe that we have between now and this publication. You know, maybe it's something, maybe we, we need to get input from those businesses sooner. input from those businesses sooner. Yeah, maybe they could fill out something a little bit quicker, maybe we could put a hot button on our, our city website that says, hey, you want to be in the next publication, your business is open, you know, fill this out real quick, and then we give a timeframe to cut it off and, and we can add them to the publication. Those are a few of my thoughts.
And I, and I would just recommend not doing it by district, because I eat a lot of your district, Corina, or Councilmember, I, you know, I eat in all the different districts, do it by districts, I want to know what's, what's.
No, I agree.
I got you, Councilwoman Franklin, you're next.
I, I definitely agree, but if we're gonna, if we were going to cut it up into a few publications, you know, I would see that as being a viable way to, to just cut it up. So I don't know, but wanted to throw that up as an idea.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin, you're on.
I was just gonna make a TikTok video over here, how's it go? Anyway. Joe would appreciate that. Okay, you know, I, I don't understand the vision. They used to deliver a magazine to the house that had 5,000 businesses in it. I think the pages were yellow. We don't use that anymore. I don't, I don't get the vision for 5,000, I mean, it's like, it's gonna be a phone book? I, I, I'm not, I'm not picking up what you're laying down here. Okay, so let's assume it's like a 12 or 20-page magazine. How are we gonna physically get this to be? We gotta mail it to every household, we gotta deliver it to every household? How are we gonna get it in people's hands?
Mr. Johnson, do you want to talk about the delivery?
This magazine in particular would be mailed. And the way it works is it's in four-page increments. So if we wanted to add more content, like naming every businesses that, business that wanted to be in there, or every business for that matter, it would just be the addition of four pages at a time before we.
Four very large pages.
Yes.
Okay, so naming every business, that's, is not gonna hurt. So then we've got a, then we've got a, a lot of businesses that I wonder why they didn't get selected for this advertisement. I, I don't know if anybody else has got any better ideas than I do. I, I'm seeing business owners upset with me because they didn't get chosen. What, what are we gonna do about that?
Well, maybe I didn't do a good enough job when I talked about Vista is Open. You know, that is a location where everyone in every district all over the city can advertise their business. And if we have the ability to promote that, I know there may be some people in the community that may not have the resources to, to go to the web, but that's one area, at least where, where we can make sure that everyone has the opportunity for free to make sure that they're marketed and it's clear that they're open.
I see Deputy Mayor Rigby down there waving.
I wasn't sure if Councilman Franklin was finished yet. He looked like he had something else to say.
I was just thinking that I had a website that everybody was already on. It starts with a G and I'm like.
Okay.
I, I don't get the concept. I, I don't, I, I'm, I'm gonna go visit the website right now, because I'm, I'm just, I'm not understanding why folks, I mean, are we gonna advertise to bring people to the website? I don't get the vision for it, I really don't. And I don't, I don't mean to be cute, but I, I just, I'm not, I'm not understanding the vision for it.
A website? Or do you not understand the vision for the, the?
I get the four-page mailer. I still have a concern about who we're gonna choose to highlight it, because we're only gonna do, I think it was like four increments of this. And then, you know, we've got the, the problem of we can't feature every business in four pages. If we start doing four versions of it, that's gonna get more expensive, you know, it, because printing is kind of my business. It really doesn't matter, once you get over X thousand, like, the, you print 10,000, 11,000, the next thousand's almost free. It's just paper and ink at that point. You know, the versions are what really costs us, the setup, the artwork, that's really the expense. You know, it's, it's, it's an incremental commodity expense for each additional print once you get past 10,000. So I don't know that that's really viable without a lot bigger budget. The website thing, I, I get it, it's, it's a nice idea, but I just don't really, you know, without driving people there through paid advertising, I'm not really sure, you know, why folks would be going to the website. I, I feel like we're kind of trying to, we're, we're maybe trying, it was a good intent, but I, I feel like we're maybe trying a little too hard.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a great discussion, I appreciate it very much. In the staff report, on this item, it says, and I think it says also on your slide, complete a special business edition of our Vista. So when you say four pages, is the magazine going to only be four pages, or are you looking at four pages out of the rest of the magazine?
It would, right now, it's four pages out of the rest of the magazine. And as Mr. Johnson said, if we have additional content, we can go up in sets of four. So it could go four to eight.
Okay. I was thinking by the verbiage in the staff report that we were looking at a special edition, that would just be all business-related. But you talked about the website, and we had a website that you put up a couple of months ago that was Downtown Vista or something, that was, we were funneling all of our businesses and our restaurants that were still open for takeout and delivery to sign themselves up and make sure that they were included. Is that the same website you're talking about now? Because it sounded like it was two different titles.
Yes, it is. Vista is Open would be the new website. And it's more than just a website. It would include social media, it would include both Facebook and Instagram, it would include advertising in our local online papers, would include purchasing stickers for the floor, social distancing stickers for the floor that says Vista is Open, would include a loyalty program. So individuals who wanted to have a company and they want to put up a special, currently, some of those small businesses really do not have that capacity. And this would provide a free option for them to do that. So if they wanted to do a two-for-one special. So the website is one piece of it, but it includes social media, print media, as well as other activities specifically for the holidays. As we approach the holidays, we know that many of our businesses live and die by the holidays, and given the challenges that they have had, this would really create a focus on that period of time as well, so we could drive people into those stores. And so the goal is not really to drive people to the website as much as to have a holistic approach on marketing materials to bring people into our local restaurants, breweries, and retailers.
Okay. And I'm assuming that that would also have a prominent place on the homepage for the city website, just, and maybe our Vista app, is that something we can put on the app as well? Something to think about?
I will ask, Mr. Johnson, is that something that we could do?
Because that seems like the perfect thing to be up.
Yeah, I think if it's relevant to the business community.
Well, if you're looking at businesses that are open, just a thought there, it's, people are on the move, they're mobile, they're looking. The other question I have for you is, we have, I don't remember how many of these signs that are on the street corners, like at Hacienda and Melrose, and a couple of other places through town, that every so often they change out with a different advertisement for an event, or sign up for Little League or whatever. Are we gonna be utilizing that as well to promote this item or this project?
Yes, when the time is available, if it's not taken up by someone else, we would use the over-the-street banner or one of those, I think we have eight now, corner signs.
Okay, okay. Well, I was really, really excited for this when I saw it in the, the staff report. I'm not sure I'm, I'm seeing the same vision on this that you are, but you are an expert and very good at what you do. So I will trust you to see how this comes to fruition. But I think whatever we can do for our businesses as far as promoting them, advertising them, and being as inclusive for all of our businesses, restaurants, breweries, retail, whatever, is, is where we want to go, I think, as a council, to do everything that we can to bring our businesses out of this, part of our recovery plan. So thank you for this, I appreciate it.
And I might add, these programs came together by asking, and there were several proposals that didn't make it into this. We asked marketing specialists, business support specialists, and we've had several conversations with industry clusters, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the CEO, to get their input on what they think might help them, when that might need be, when it's something and when it should roll out. And so we've taken what we've heard and we've kind of addressed it with each of these options that we've presented to you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like me to move on to the next option?
Sure.
I actually have one more question about the magazine. I just wanted to, sorry, Madam Mayor, is it okay?
No, it's fine.
Okay, just in regards to Councilmember Franklin, he said he really couldn't see the vision, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what this is, because kind of like Deputy Mayor Rigby said, is in the report, the, you know, it says it's $12,371 for a special business edition of our Vista magazine. How many pages is the our Vista magazine normally? Isn't it like a 30-page, like, document or something like that?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of pages. Normally, normally it goes ahead and takes care of recreation, that's the primary focus of that magazine, and then we put a four-page spread on different city issues in it. And so, just in this time, is to put the spread about businesses.
Cool. And that's my thing, is my vision for this magazine wasn't that we cram four pages in, it wasn't that it looks like a, you know, Yellow Pages, it was that, hey, we already have a readership of 34,000 people for this magazine. As a small business owner myself, I can't afford to send a mailer out to 34,000 people. So I think instead of saying, hey, we're only gonna use four pages or eight pages, you know, if there's any way to, you know, trickle businesses in all 30 pages, or if it's a four-page, I mean, eight times four, 32 pages, how many can we put into there? And instead of just doing it our June, how often is the magazine sent out? Is it a quarterly magazine, Mr. Hamm?
I think it's, I think it's three times a year.
Three times a year.
Okay, so we're not gonna have another one sent out for a long time. So that's my thing, if this is really a business edition, a Vista Business is Open, I don't think allocating 10% of the magazine towards businesses makes that a business edition magazine, quite frankly. I'd like to allocate 70% of the magazine towards businesses or whatever. I don't know what we're filling the other 28 pages with, but I feel like it's not as important as the businesses. And since this is a magazine we already put out, that 34,000 people already receive, I feel like it's just a matter of formatting it, if we have to make it a little larger. And, you know, you could say dining options, here's 200 that are open. I mean, there's gotta be a way to fit it in to make it look good. I'm not asking for a, you know, Yellow Pages format by any means. This is a beautiful magazine that Vistims look forward to receiving, and I really think it could be a really great asset for the community. And with 34 pages, or 38 pages, or 40 pages, we can fit a lot of info in there. So I just want to make sure, the option C right here of $12,371, I'm completely behind spending the money on it. I love this magazine, I look forward to receiving it, but I really would like a way for it to be more business-oriented than just four pages of business-specific. So that's what I'm.
Just say, before we move on, if the council's interested, then please provide us consensus or majority direction on what you're looking for. If you want us to add four more pages to it, as an example, and you want us to list businesses that are open and available, then we can look into that and come back to you. But if you want that, if the majority of the council wants that, I think we need direction at this point, and then we can move on.
I would like that.
I would like that.
I would like that as well.
I would like that as well. And, and, you know, punctuating what Councilman Green said, I, I think it should be a special business edition. And I, and I thought you had said you would be doing four pages of this one, and then if there was something else coming out. But if we only do it three times a year, our businesses really are in dire needs now, not in the future. So I would like us to see a special edition that focuses on businesses, not just a special section. So I agree with that.
Exactly. And the way that we don't leave them out is we have people who pay for business licenses. If you've paid for a business license, you're an active Vista business, that's how we know who you are. You don't have to be included, you're already a Vista business. I don't know.
All right, well, I think we've.
Except we just extended the business license till the, till the fall, right?
Yeah, but there, people are all still business licensed in Vista. So we'll go ahead and look at that and work something up and then provide you feedback, okay?
Quickly, because we need it right away.
Okay.
Got it. All right, moving on to the next option. Option D, there is no cost related to this. This would be staff-focused. This is page five of the PowerPoint, for those who view that are tracking along with this. The goal for this is to permit the use of outdoor public and private space for retail, restaurants, and breweries to allow for social distancing. In conversations with these uses, some of them have as few as 40% of their space that they can use. So we're looking at potentially parking lots, open areas, excess right-of-way, and other areas to create additional space to enable businesses to be more profitable. So what we're suggesting is that we look into this and we bring back those code changes that are necessary to you as soon as possible.
Anybody? Deputy Mayor.
I think this is a great idea. I really, really like this idea a lot. I know we've had some comments that we received through the email about this as well. Does it, does it have to go through revised of the code, or can we just do a special order with an expiration date?
Well, I would say the city attorney and, and us have talked greatly about this. Mr. Piper, would you want to talk a little bit about what it entails?
Yes. What we need to determine is what, what, if anything, does require code amendment. Other cities have made emergency ordinances, changing provisions of their code. Some of those provisions might be permanent. I think certainly some of them were short-term. But of course, nobody's code is the same, so we can't just cut and paste what, what another city did into Vista. But as soon as we have your direction of what you'd like to do, then we will tackle it and figure out how to make it possible. There may be a couple of things that, that have a different lead time. You know, state law requires some things to go to the planning commission before they go to the council. I'm not sure that what you would want to do involves any of those, but those are the kinds of things we have to look at. But we'll definitely come back to you as soon as possible with, with the program.
Okay, because I anticipate all of, most, if not all, of the things that we want to do to make this happen for our businesses would be on a temporary basis, perhaps not on a permanent basis. So I wasn't sure if, you know, we can just do it that way, but okay, we'll have you come back with that.
And with regard to the staff recommendation, at this point in time, we're recommending 90 days after the end of the city's emergency declaration. That may change based upon working with the attorney and, and what we need to do and what we can figure out, what works best. But right now, we're not envisioning it going more than 90 days past that declaration, and it may even be shorter depending upon what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
And I would hope it would be very, it would be soon, because, you know, restaurants now can open, and in order to make it financially feasible to, to even open, they can't, if they have to operate at 25%, it isn't, it isn't financially worth it. They have to be able to get more tables and spread out a little bit. So I, I mean, I, this, we're behind the curve on this. I think we need to have this now, you know, as soon as possible. So, and I, and I don't want to wait for the planning commission to, okay, and I want to be able to, and I, I even think our next meeting is too long, which is the, you know, anyway, that's my opinion, sorry, guys.
No, I, I agree, Madam Mayor. I'm looking tomorrow.
Right.
If there are things we can do with a simple declaration or emergency order, we will do those things. If those things require, legally require council action, then those will come back to you. And I only mentioned the planning commission as a remote possibility. It just depends on whether or not one of these things should happen to impact those requirements under state law. I doubt that any do, but it was just in the interest of making sure you understand that some things just are government.
Well, we know that, but, I mean, things like parking lots that. that, that shouldn't, you know, if they have a parking lot attached to their building, that, that should take, not should be able to let them use that if they wanted to. And I hope we're not going to hold them to any kind of parking, you know, like, take care of your parking lot. You're going to find other parking somewhere else. I hope we wouldn't do that. We have enough, let people find parking and let them use their parking places if they need to. Like, that, that would be my opinion, so.
Any more questions on E?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment too. I, I do think it's a great idea. And I don't know if it's in order, but if we can, by sense of the council, give the city manager authority to make some immediate short-term enforcement changes in our ordinances, I certainly would favor that. And then we can formalize it at our next meeting. But I would delegate the authority to the city manager to do whatever is appropriate to implement because I think clearly there's a consensus of the council on this item.
I would agree with that. And if it does have to come back to council, I'm not opposed to an emergency meeting to do that. We've had two of those or one of those already. So anything we can do to expedite this happening?
I agree.
I agree with that.
I'm 100% in agreement with that. We need to do this as soon as possible.
Okay, so on that one.
Thank you. All right, so another option, which doesn't cost any money, but it's staff time. Option E, this is the sixth slide, which is to allow businesses to use additional signage in a manner that is mindful of the council goals to reduce blight while at the same time promoting their business. This could include banners, window signs, and other options. Again, on this, staff will return to council as soon as possible with the code and policy changes to allow for this. And again, as it relates to this, we're not recommending that this would go longer than 90 days past the end of our emergency declaration. And again, it may be shorter. Any questions?
One quick thing, and I totally support this. We don't really know yet when our emergency declaration is going to run out. I'd like to put a, just as a protectionary measure, I'd like to see December 31st, the end of this year, bring an end to all of these, you know, abridgments of our, of our ordinances. And if we need to reevaluate after December 31st, we can. But in any case, I, I would like to address these issues again in January if, God forbid, we're still in a state of emergency.
So a sunset that would take place in December unless there's some extenuating circumstances to continue it?
If 90 days from the expiration of the emergency declaration comes sooner, then that would be the expiration date of these measures. However, like I say, if that, if the emergency order is still in effect as of the end of the year, then I would like to bring these items back to council to assess how long, because there's been states of emergency that have lasted for, you know, 12 months. There's some, there's some cities still that are in a state of emergency for three years due to the fires and other disasters. So I think it's not something we want to do for longer than six months without really giving some significant thought to how it affects the city. So as a temporary measure, yes, but I just, there should be some sunset to it.
I think the council supports that. Put the language in place when we bring these items back formally.
Any, any more comments or questions on E?
I don't see any other different ones.
All right. Moving on, this is the seventh slide. This is option F. The cost for this is $30,750. This is one that has continued to change because, as all of us know, the opening of businesses continues to change hourly. And so the idea originally with this is to provide stand-up, startup reopening assistance and information to our local businesses. We had originally thought of this and started working on it a month and a half ago. We've constructed this in a way that if we do not use all of the services, for example, a checkoff list is no longer needed, we are not going to be charged for that. We can remove that from the contract and not pay for it. But essentially, this would include web-based presentations and support materials to assist retail restaurants and other businesses on how to reopen according to the required standards. Some of the deliverables would be kind of a post-COVID closure, opening support for local businesses, technical assistance workshops. Kathy, if you can go to slide eight. These on the continued page are some that I am most excited about if we implement. And there's not as much cost associated with this, but rethinking the business model, really assisting businesses and entrepreneurs in our community to think about how they repurpose their business model given the impacts of COVID-19. This is something we're exploring. Our Vista Economic Development Strategy Committee is going to meet on the 8th of June. These are some of the things that we're going to address. How do we move forward? How do we change the businesses and support the businesses in our community? So there are places where our residents can work and we can kind of see around the corner for the future. One-on-one assistance, what we are able to do is negotiate with them for a discounted rate. So if someone has a unique situation and they need some serious hand-holding, they could do that. I might add that the gentleman with Strategies 360, he used to work in the governor's office of GoBiz, on many of the calls and the communications with the business, will have individuals from the, the state offices at the highest level helping our businesses know what's going on and having that information as soon as possible. Also, they'll be assisting with our Vista is Open communications for our local businesses. So if they're working with them, they have the ability to make sure that that's connected with our Vista is Open marketing campaign. And then the one that really excites me here is putting together a COVID-19 Business Resiliency Lab. This is where things could really change the game for us. Again, looking at our strategic plan into the future, looking at accessing some of the EDA federal funding to work on a physical location for a resiliency lab, whether it's one of our local businesses that could house this, or a virtual location. And it would serve as a core hub for promoting communication, coordination, and collaboration against industry sectors and industries themselves. It would function to reduce the social and economic losses that we've seen and that would help really move our economy forward. I might add that the gentleman that would be working on this project is working for a couple of statewide organizations to stand something up called Outsmart Disaster. So he is already working on those issues that relate to disasters and how businesses can respond. So before I leave option eight, is there, are there any questions related to any of these items?
I don't see anybody making any way.
I have a question. With regard to the webinars or things we're going to offer, the classes, have we got any actual feedback? Have we begun to solicit feedback from any of our business owners about the particular curriculum and whether or not it's something that they would tell us for sure, I want to devote an hour or two to this webinar? I, I wager a lot of them are, you know, to give an hour or two of their time to participate in something. It's, it's really going to have to be incredibly impactful, their business. And I just wonder if we actually have affirmative feedback from real businesses in Vista that they say, yes, I need this.
Yes, so we've talked to businesses, whether it's in clusters, groups, or individually. We've heard that this is something that's needed. Businesses are different. So for example, with regard to the brewery, since they're stage three, some of the information that they might need is later in the process. Or how we assist the businesses may be different. So one of our restaurants and several of the restaurants chimed in when she suggested this, that she suggested that one of the things that we do is a video specifically as part of these presentations that we can allow all of the restaurants use that would show what are the specific behaviors you need to model and what type of safety procedures need to be in place for our restaurants as they open, whether it's gloves, masks, the type of social distancing activities that are important for the restaurant as they open and they continue operations. I might add that this would also be in place. So if in fact we had to go backwards, this organization could help us work with our businesses to understand what they needed to do to take a step back, if that is something that had to take place. And again, with all of this, especially on this contract, if we only use 3,000 and not 30,000 because we're not going to do it just because it needs to be done, we're not going to use that money. We'd only use what needs to be spent.
So I just have a few comments, if I, if I may. You know, looking at the menu of options here, I really see option D and F as, as being probably the most impactful. I, I think that option F here, it's definitely needed. This is an incredible service that we could provide to our business community because none of us, we, we have no idea how long this is going to go on. Hopefully, we're all hoping that, you know, we can open up fully. But, you know, some of our businesses may have to pivot. They might have to modify their business plan. And, you know, they want to continue to be viable. They want to stay here in Vista. Creating this type of resilience in, in our business community is absolutely necessary. And, you know, at this point, we also don't know what other kind of technologies might come out of our biotech sector locally and how some of these businesses may be able to move forward in, in these new possible directions. So I, I think option F is probably one of the best options that we have outlined here for our business community because it is so comprehensive. And, you know, maybe not every business is going to need a one-on-one type of situation, but, you know, for those who, who do want to utilize that, I think this is incredible. And I really, really am thankful for staff putting this together because honestly, option F, this is, this really hits it out of the park, in my view, in my perspective. And, but, this is my only comments I have on that. But thank you so much to, to Mr. Hamm and, and to our, our staff because this is an incredible option that we're going to provide to our business community.
Do we have any other comments, Franklin? Oh, see, I see two, okay. Frank, well, I see three, actually. So we'll go Franklin, then Deputy Mayor, then Green.
I just wanted to know if we have the facility to make phone calls, at least to retail businesses, which probably represent 20% or fewer of our businesses. Do we have the ability to get on the phone and call a few hundred businesses a day and let them know if we're going to invest heavily in these resources? Get on the phone, you know, this is Joe with the, John with the City of Vista. You know, want to let you know about some resources that we're going to make available. If you've got a minute, I can tell you about the ones that are particularly relevant to your business. Most folks are going to say, thanks, I'm not interested, but the act of reaching out to connect people with these services since they're there, how else are they going to find out about them? So do we have that facility?
So we would work with the Chamber of Commerce. We've touched base with about 270 businesses now, one-on-one. We also have worked with industry clusters. We had an industry cluster meeting last week with the breweries. We had our Vista Brewers Guild chair on that. We're working with the San Diego Brewers Guild Executive Director to help get the word out to our Vista breweries. As it relates to our restaurants, we had several, several of our restaurants and retailers on those calls. So we would use all the mechanisms we have to get the information out, whether it was on the phone, whether it was our newsletter. You might remember the Chamber, as part of our loan with the Chamber of Commerce, they're going to assist us in getting some of the messages out. They probably would do so anyways on this. But I know that they've been very supportive. They would probably get on the phone and help us get as much information out about this as possible.
I think it's important that folks know that it's the city that's reaching out to them. If we're going to invest the city's funds, I think it's important that people know who's, you know, funding the effort. So it'd be nice, and it'd be nice to know that at least with the retail businesses that are probably the most impacted, that we are going to be able to make a phone call. I mean, to take one person a week to call through 1,000 businesses and, you know, leave messages and have a few conversations. So I don't know if we can do it, but I think it'd be important if we're going to invest these kind of funds to, you know, really connect the dots for people.
And we would also use those emails that we've collected or that we have through business license to make sure that we get the message out.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been a really great presentation, Mr. Hamm. I really appreciate the time and energy that you put into, to this. You heard what we were asking for. You heard what our constituents are asking for. And I have to agree with Councilmember Contreras. Number, or item F really is outstanding. And I can see where our businesses would benefit from that greatly. I also like the elements in this plan that will benefit the consumer, the constituents, and knowing what's out there, how to access it. So I actually really like all of these. But I wanted to point out for just edification for however many people are out there watching and listening right now, if you haven't looked at the staff report, it was mentioned that this is going to cost approximately $107,371. Where is that money coming from? I'm looking at the different sources for this funding, and I am, don't, don't know the right word. I was struck by where this money would be coming from because some of it would be coming from the structural deficit reserve fund, which we have talked about quite a bit during this time period and what we have done and the decisions that we've made over the last few years to create this deficit reserve fund for situations like we are in to help the city get through another recession, which we anticipate will be punctuating this whole event. So it will be coming, coming from that, also from Economic Development Professional Services. So can you talk a little bit about what Economic Development Professional Services are, Kevin?
Sure. So as I had mentioned earlier, that $12,000 actually is a contract that we have set aside already for the next fiscal year for Rising Tide. So in our conversation with Rising Tide, we've asked them, how can we amplify your efforts to help us get our message out about the great things that are taking place in our community? So that money was already directed towards them. And so the additional $12,500 is really on top of that to help amplify and really increase that reach of that public relations component, specifically for the $12,000 related to that.
Right, okay. And then I see here recreation administration advertising. Some of the money is coming from that account and non-departmental office supplies as well. So we really are committed to the community, to our businesses, to our constituency, on helping with the recovery of our city because it is so vital to everybody on every level. And to me, showing the one, two, three, four, five different accounts that the money for this will be coming from, I think is a testament to how committed as a city we are to our community. And I just want to say thank you and kudos to everybody. And I really do appreciate hearing from all of the businesses as well as our constituents, our fellow Vistans who have had ideas, who have had questions, or perhaps some people have not had any ideas or questions, but they wanted to reach out with their concerns. And those were heard as well. So I just want to say thank you for this. Really very much appreciate it.
They're green.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I love the idea that Councilmember Franklin proposed of like the personal outreach touch from the city so that they know, hey, the city is, city's got your back. We're spending money trying to help you out, whatever that is, whether it's through your email or your phone call. I love the phone call idea. People don't do it enough, and I think it's a lot more personal. The other thing is, is I have a question. I've never been to a business resiliency lab before, so maybe I sound a little, I don't, I don't know what that is. So I'm wondering, I know it says for the next four to six months, we're going to create a business resiliency lab, to six months, we're going to create a business resiliency lab and we're going to tell people we have one. Is this a lab that's located like in the city, similar to the Makers Lab that you guys have where, you know, you help with ideas and things? So number one, where's the location? Who staffs it? And who gets to come use it?
So this is a proposal that we're going to put together for the federal EDA. And over the next several months, we will put together this proposal. So whether it's a physical location, whether it's a virtual location, we've already had conversations with OSML about maybe hosting this use as a physical location in that space. No one has really thought of a business resiliency lab. I think everyone has thought of what is the new normal. I think of what is the future? And really, this is thinking of the future. How can our businesses, again, think ahead of the curve around the corner in a structured way to help us be able to respond to what's happened, be prepared for what's next, and put in place solutions, ideas, and programs that help our businesses, but by extension, our residents as well?
Okay, so I love the ideas as far as the like location and how it works and everything. It sounds like we know what we want to do. We just haven't figured out all the, all the ins and outs yet, but it's going to be something that helps our businesses recover, basically.
Correct.
I can get behind that. Thank you.
Okay, then I guess I don't see any other speakers. And the only thing I want to say is, I just want to make sure that, oh, Councilmember Franklin, sorry.
Well, not to interrupt you, Mayor, but I just wanted to say on a serious note, I really do appreciate staff and Mr. Hamm and his staff putting these ideas together. I don't understand all of them, but that's kind of a limitation of the virtual venue that we're on here. I also understand the need to do something and to delegate some authority to staff here to try and make some things happen. Some of them are going to be great, some of them may not. But I do trust, you know, I trust you. And I do definitely want to kind of get out of your way and give you the authority to do some things and, you know, and get hands-on with our businesses and help them in any way that we can. So, you know, I'm going to be supportive of the package and just trust that there's a lot here that I can't absorb over a Zoom call. And I look forward to seeing the product.
I'd also say that I want to thank Mr. Hamm for all that he did. Great presentation and I appreciate that. But I also wanted to, because I said that big businesses didn't need the help, you know, they don't need the help. And I just wanted to clarify that I don't mean they don't, they struggled also, I know, but I just know that the little businesses were in, are in dire help that they're, may go out of business. And so I know that they need more help because they can, they can sustain themselves for two or three months where a bigger business can sustain themselves a little longer. So anyway, I wanted to make sure that I didn't insult the big businesses because I know that they need help also and they struggle too. So, Councilmember, big, big.
We need a motion on this to amend the budget. Am I correct? So I would like to go ahead and move that we approve this council resolution amending the operating budget for fiscal years 2019, 20 and 2021 as presented in this report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And now, but we also have to take a short recess to allow for public comment to be received. So comments can be emailed to publiccomments@cityofvista.com. So we'll take a brief three-minute break and then we'll be back. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Okay, we're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comments, this item is now closed. And our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, please share the public comments if you received any.
Thank you. We received a couple. And there's also a couple that were submitted earlier that were asked to be read. The first is from Jeff Underall. Dear Kathy, Judy, Joe, and all our awesome city officials, I'm with a group of local business owners right now looking for solutions on how we can help all you like-minded City of Vista officials take a public stance this week. We can offer a top-line recording studio who will produce it at no charge to create a positive video to blast message out on SM and go viral and modify the current state mandates. Ideally, there would also be a good local doctor giving real stats and the sheriff supporting it. Appreciate you, Jeff Underall and friends. Next is from Rachel Belt, Chief Executive Officer of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. Just dear Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for taking the time to discuss and consider ways to support businesses as they move to recover from COVID-19. I believe now more than ever we need to remove barriers to success of our businesses. Allowing additional signage and creating ways for businesses to expand their fiscal footprint are great ways to do this. Economic development promotion, website, and articles will be a great way to increase exposure, to attract new companies, and also a way to recognize already existing Vista businesses. This promotion will support the city's recovery efforts. I am proud to serve on the VEDS Committee and look forward to ongoing discussions about how the city and chamber can partner to support our businesses. Thank you again for this discussion and consideration. Next is from Katie Melendez. Dear Vista City Council and Mayor, I'm writing in support of making temporary or even permanent zoning changes to allow for expanded outdoor seating for dine-in restaurants. In addition, I encourage the City of Vista to make sure these economic recovery opportunities are accessible by working with businesses throughout the district as well as downtown. How will the city do outreach to businesses? Please be sure to explore opportunities for economic equity by including resources for working people, not just business owners. Workers are on the front lines of this pandemic and often lack hazard pay, education, and other resources and opportunities. Thank you for all that you are doing. Thank you to all those who are doing their part to keep us safe and I hope we can be, have a safe and successful reopening. And the last is from Nikki Leeds. Dear Vista City Councilmembers, let shutdown through traffic and/or allow sidewalk dining to help our restaurants and breweries stay in business. Please pass an emergency variance ordinance to comply with restaurant social distance orders. Our city can't afford for these businesses to go under it. They need our support. Normally, Nikki Leeds. And then you also had received an email earlier from Helen Linder, supporting the closure of Main Street for dining as well. And that's it for public comments on this item.
If that's it for public comments, do I have any other comments from any council members? So seeing none, then I would call for, I have a motion, actually a motion by Deputy Mayor Rigby and a second by Councilmember Franklin. So please give us a roll call vote.
All right. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our fourth discussion item, COVID-18 coronavirus impact on the city, citizens, and businesses of Vista. Deputy Mayor Rigby asked for this item to be on the agenda, so I'm going to ask her to enter to see the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I had asked for this to be on the agenda, it was a while back and it was before some of the changes that have come through over the last week or the last few days and yesterday and this morning, Friday. Because we're looking at, as we've just had a long discussion, a great discussion, which really dovetails into what I had wanted to bring up and talk about, was how are we going to reopen our city and what that plan would look like when we did? How could we prepare businesses? How could we prepare consumers to go back out and feel safe in their environment and try to get back to a level of normalcy that we're all looking for? So I've encouraged, over the last few days, that some of the businesses are allowed to open. Different things have been happening with a little bit more speed than we were looking at before, which was my concern, that things were not opening as quickly as we had wanted or some people thought should. Some decisions were made and then changed, you know, minds were changed or things. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to talk openly with my council colleagues about the situation and what we could do as a city. We just had a great discussion on the economic impact for our businesses and what we can do to help them. But I don't know if you, if you all got the same memo I did, but I also look every day on the website for the state health department as well as the county health department to see what's happening in our communities. And one of the things that came across my desk, and I think yours as well, was regarding the unemployment rate in our community from the beginning of March. In 92081, which is my, my, where I live in the 92081, and part of my district is in 81. In March, we were at 3.04% unemployment rate. And now we are at a 31.4% employment rate. So I took the zip codes in Vista and I added them up, what we were in March, and I averaged it. So in March, Vista was roughly an average of 2.63 unemployment rate. And now we are a 30.63 unemployment rate. So when we talk about our businesses and what we want to do to help them open, I do know that we got word that some of our businesses did not survive this or will not survive this and are closing. And so job loss is going to be ongoing for people because some of the businesses aren't coming back. So I just wanted to have a conversation. I just wanted to get a feel from my colleagues on this. If there was any discussion or any way that we can help our constituents with unemployment and what that would look like. We've had a conversation on this side. Maybe we need to have a look on the other side as well, or the flip side. But also, we heard a lot, I think if you're like me, you got contacted or read social media, et cetera, about churches. And I wanted to have that discussion too about our churches opening. But our churches were given permission to open with guidelines. And interesting, I reached out to some of our churches in our, in our city to talk to them about what opening for them would look like with these restrictions for the, the safety precautions and the protocols that are in place. And as much as I have heard from so many of the constituency about wanting their churches open, the pastors, ministers that I spoke to at some of the churches in Vista, and granted, I didn't speak to everybody, so don't think I did. I spoke to a handful. They're not ready to open yet because of the protocol that is in place isn't feasible for their church, their site. Some of them are thinking of perhaps modifying it to an outdoor program, et cetera. So as much as the, the people are really wanting for that to be, the doors thrown wide open and let's just do it, the churches aren't there yet. So anyway, I just wanted to have a conversation and I don't know the answer to what we can do about the unemployment. What can we do about businesses and jobs in our community? And what can we do to support the businesses? And I know that some are hiring, not as many as lost jobs. So I just wanted to have a conversation. I wanted to get a feel from my colleagues on your position or your thoughts on reopening our city. Like I said, when I asked for this to get put on the agenda, a lot of the things that are open now weren't, and I wanted to have that discussion. So I think Mr. Hamm covered a great portion of the conversation earlier, but I didn't know if there was a conversation that we could have about the other side of it, talking about job loss, the economic impact for our constituency, who might not be able to go out and have dinner at these restaurants and might, might not be able to go support the businesses now that they have, they're not working. And then the concern about whether or not the unemployment insurance is going to be there. My understanding from the last article I read was that Governor Newsom is looking to the federal government to help shore up the unemployment because the demand has been more than he has available. So I just wanted to open it up. If you guys have any thoughts, comments, or questions, or direction of something that we might be able to do, I would love to have the conversation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, I want to really thank Deputy Mayor Rigby for putting this on, on the agenda because it does allow us to have an open discussion regarding the situation that we're in right now. You know, the unemployment numbers are disastrous. I mean, it is just an incredible amount of individuals who have lost their source of income. And, you know, people were barely starting to recover from the last downturn. And some people haven't recovered, right? And then, so now we have this layered on top. You know, I don't want to belabor a point, but I do want to say that, you know, there, in a previous discussion, we did discuss a rent and resident and commercial moratorium. So I don't know if the council would even, you know, want to entertain discussing that at this point when we're looking at 30% unemployment. You know, that's the, that's the first place right there. I'm, I'm getting a lot of constituents telling me, we, we have no money to pay our rent right now. We have a little bit of money. We're trying to stretch it. So, you know, that's something that I'm always willing to have a discussion on if we want to reassess our previous discussion on that. And perhaps at this point, you know, it's something that we would move forward unanimously on. But outside of that, you know, this, this discussion item also affords us the opportunity to talk about some of our at-risk populations. You know, I just got done making all my phone calls to our senior volunteers. And although I didn't get to talk to everybody, I left quite a few voicemails, but I did get to speak to quite a few. And, you know, the, the burning question is, when is our seniors going to open? And I don't have an answer right now because I know that it's, we are looking at probably the most vulnerable population, right? When we're talking about our seniors and the context that we're in right now. But, you know, maybe that's something that we could start thinking about. I know around the senior center, there's a, there's a lot of parking. Maybe we can do some kind of physically distant dining or physical activities. You know, maybe that's something that we can implement a little bit sooner. And then another part of it that really concerns me is, it's already getting really hot. It is getting so hot. Most people just really don't have AC here in San Diego County, it seems like, especially in our older homes. And so, you know, And so, you know, what is our population, who needs a little bit more of a cool environment, where are they going to go? And so I think that this discussion item affords us the opportunity to maybe start thinking and having a discussion about what we, how we're going to accommodate and responsibly and safely, you know, start connecting our senior community a little bit more. But I am really concerned about the cool zones because access to them, I don't know how we're going to do that. It seems like it's going to be a hot summer. I'm also concerned about fire season in the way that that might overlap with a possible second wave. And so, you know, I don't know if any of my colleagues want to address any of the points that I made, but that's kind of what I'm looking at right now as far as the hot button issues that people are asking me about. So I'll go ahead and be quiet at this moment and see if my colleagues have any, anything
Looking to see, I don't see any other.
No.
Councilmember Green?
I was just going to thank Deputy Mayor for throwing this on the agenda as well. I know when it became an agenda item, our restaurants weren't open, we had no hope of churches being open, our salons, our barber shops, a lot of our businesses just weren't open. And I definitely support getting our businesses open safely and, you know, getting patrons in them and trying to kind of curve that unemployment rate down as much as possible. So I think whatever we can do as a council to get our businesses, you know, reopened is definitely something we can do since they're all, you know, kind of open. I'm not really sure what else, we need to really petition the governor to open. I think that he's looking at approving the expedited plan that the county put forward as well. So I think that we're on the right path. I love the discussion we had about restaurants. I think, you know, letting them do business in front of their restaurants, even, you know, roving off parking spaces. I don't know what your guys' feeling is on shutting down Main Street. It kind of, you know, facilitates a big gathering and it's kind of something we're trying to pull away from. So I don't know about closing down the whole street, but maybe getting rid of the parking spaces, all of them except for the handicap parking spaces, and allowing businesses like, you know, Miko Sushi and Brood and stuff like that that are down there on Main Street to use those spaces for their tables because a 25-seater capacity makes it tough to, you know, make that monthly, you know, target that they got to hit. So I'd definitely like to see how we can provide as much space for them to do business as possible and kind of like the mayor said, not make them find additional parking spaces, you know? They can, if people want to go out to eat, they're going to do it. And I think that we have had people trying to patronize these restaurants. I also want to address what Councilwoman Contreras said. I love the idea of a distance dining event for seniors. I've also spoken with a lot of seniors and they're lonely, you know? They're driving up, getting their meals and going home, and they're the most vulnerable I know, and they're the ones that are kind of, you know, cooped up more than anybody. And even just them being able to drive in their car and have somebody serve them their meal and say hi, I mean, we could all make an event of it where the council serves them in the parking lot, you know? And just let them know they matter to us. So I would totally be down for something like that, and I would encourage staff to create an event, talk to Donna, and I see my council members, we love our seniors. So I think that we would all be excited to do something for them to just kind of bring up the morale. And then the cool zone, we're going to have to have more cool zones than we typically have. We can't throw everybody in the library or at the rec center or wherever. So where are those cool zones? And, you know, maybe we can partner with local businesses, you know, where we say, hey, this restaurant's cool, go, you know, 10% discount on hot days if you go have food inside Swami's or inside Miko Sushi, I don't know, something. But I definitely think it's something we need to think about. I don't have air conditioning in my house, and a couple weeks out of the year, man, it's really hot. And, I mean, I know I'm well insulated, but I wouldn't want grandma hanging out there in that type of heat. I mean, it gets over 90 degrees sometimes, so, and it's only going to get hotter as the summer comes along. The other thing that you discussed was the moratorium on evictions and foreclosures. And I wanted to kind of speak with the city attorney as well, just to kind of see where the state's at. I know the council initially, we said, hey, we support the state. I mean, I don't think you can evict anybody or get a, you know, they're not foreclosing right now on properties, but how long does that last and what kind of assurances can we give to our citizens and our businesses that they're not going to be evicted? And is it necessary at this point for an additional overlay on that in order for them to be protected within our city limits? So I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that question.
I do not believe that we need an overlay. What most cities have done, not all, but most cities have done, they have basically duplicated the state program and said that it expires along with the governor's expiration of his order. If you recall, the first, one of his first orders suspended state law and gave local cities the power to enact local ordinances. And that was before he took the step of enacting them himself. So I'm not sure what it gains to do something that would expire at the same time as already existing order expires. A few cities have gone beyond that, and I can tell you that they don't know if they legally can. But they have done so. They tend to be pretty large cities with pretty large pocketbooks, that's my experience. A more practical thing is, the courts have, I can't remember, 30, 40,000 cases that have to be reset, and criminal will have all the priorities. At the moment, the courts are saying they don't expect any similar cases to reach them before 2021. So as a practical matter, if you wanted to evict somebody and go in and get a court ordered eviction, at the moment, it doesn't look like you can do it until next year. So there is your practical, I think a practical concern is that the agency that is responsible is not in business.
Okay, and is there a location, like on our website? I know we have the COVID tab, something that has like a tenant's right tab or something like that that says, hey, these are the laws. City manager, I'm sure you could elaborate on that?
Yes, there is on our website. We have a residential section for people to go, and it's got all the different outlets, all the different laws from the state, services from the county, including the legal center.
So, and I work in real estate, I also manage properties, and I know the Board of Realtors sent out, you know, letters to every property manager saying, hey, these are the rules, these are the laws, this is what you can and can't do. So, you know, from an eviction standpoint, as a property manager, when tenants call, we explain to them, you know, the situation, and, you know, you can't be evicted, you can't pay your payment, and there will be a recourse for monies owed in the future. But as of right now, there's really no way to seek payments. So I've been able to assure a lot of tenants that have called kind of about the law, but that's a, you know, getting the word out there, I think, is probably what Councilwoman Contreras is trying to do, is kind of let people know that, hey, this is what the law is and we support the law. So anyways, that's kind of where I was at. The thing about the churches, I also want to elaborate on, that Deputy Mayor Rigby said is, I go to North Coast Church, which I know Mayor Ritter does as well, and our church at the size, in order to accommodate all of the social distancing, would have to have 320 services every weekend, and it's just not, there's not enough hours in the day. So we're focusing on kind of congregating in homes for now until that health order is lifted, because that's what's safest for the community. So as far as our citizens go, know that it's nothing us as a city are doing, the state and the county has health orders, and your pastors of your churches have thought that that's the safest thing to do for you and for the church community. So I want to throw that out there, but that's all I got. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor Rigby, for bringing this forward.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question just regarding, just real quick, the moratorium, because we have discussed a lot about residential, but does the, is this, does the state, I mean, is it a duplicate measure? Does the state help commercial tenants as well? Is that framework to help commercial tenants as well? Because I know we've had some businesses where the issue was not being able to leverage with their landlord because of income loss from COVID-19. So I'm curious, you know, I know we've been talking about it being duplicate, but does the state, are they doing anything about commercial tenants?
Well, again, even, again, a commercial landlord could not evict a commercial tenant because they can't access the courts. So what I think Councilmember Green would say is that the advice that the associations have been giving to the landlords is to get what you can from your tenants because you really have no other recourse at the present time. Now, all of the governor's orders have said that eventually you will owe all of the rent. Whether that will ever all be paid, I question. But the governor has said that in part because the governor doesn't want the state to be responsible for the rent that he said you don't have to pay. Because if the state were to say...
Yeah, no one wants to take that liability.
Three months of rent, then the state really has just picked up three months of rent by virtue of doing that. And that's not where they want to go. I think personally that things will tend to sort themselves out. The landlords are going to be hurt, and they are going to have to accommodate because they have another issue aside from the fact they can't access the courts at the present time. Even when they can access the courts, where are they going to get their new tenants if conditions remain as they are? Just because you could remove a non-rent paying tenant doesn't mean you acquire a new one. Who would pay rent under these circumstances?
I think there are people that would pay rent, but that's a difference of opinion here, but thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you have something? Oh, Councilmember Franklin?
I just wanted to also thank Deputy Mayor Rigby for putting this item on the agenda. If we weren't where we're at now with the governor valenting and we started to open, I think this would be a very different conversation, but it was very appropriate to put this on the agenda, and I appreciate you doing so.
Thank you. I did have a couple of comments or questions, if I may, Madam Mayor. We talked about the job loss, we talked about the website. The report that came out regarding the unemployment, 92081 was one of the top 10 hardest-hit zip codes in the entire region. And that is right here in Vista, in District 3. And that is huge for us, and I was very sad to see that we were in the top 10 of the hardest-hit unemployment rates in the county. So we talked about the website, what we have on our COVID-19 banner and all the information that's there, and we talk about the businesses that are reopening or have reopened and what we are doing for the businesses. I would like to propose, and let me know how far out I am on this one, I'm happy to take it, is it possible in our business special edition for our Vista to also talk about job listings or some information or website, it could be included, a link on our page, or something to show people who are in need of a job now, that we are one of the top 10 highest unemployment, hardest-hit areas? I want to do for our community looking for jobs, those families that need income to put food on their table. I was also working earlier, a few weeks ago with a food bank, and even then, it wasn't, you know, two full months, that's, you know, eight weeks, nine weeks out like we are now. The devastation, the absolute devastation that some of our families were experiencing at that time is now unprecedented, what we're experiencing now. So if we're going to be doing things for our businesses to lift them up, I would like to see what we can do to lift up our residents who are in need of jobs to put food on the table for their families. So I would like to propose that we add a link, and I don't know how this would look, and I'm so sorry that Kevin's not still with us, but Mr. City Manager, perhaps you could help shepherd this idea. How we can look at doing job listings on our website or create a link from our website to some other place for people who are looking for jobs and they want to stay in their own community, what, who's hiring, who's expanding, who's reopening? That's one of the things that I want to see if we can do, and maybe can come back to us with some information or some ideas on that. The other thing I would like to think about, and this also is not a fully baked idea, but it is something that's been tooling around in here, is that if we're going to do a full business edition of, or a full special edition of our Vista and we talk about the businesses, that is a huge need for them, jobs is a need. But also, the other impacts that this virus, this whole pandemic has had for us is on our mental health and some of the issues that we've had with an increase in domestic violence issues. I know you all know that I used to work in that area, and that's close to my heart. But some other issues as well. And so when we're talking about putting together a special edition of our Vista and reaching everywhere that we can across our community and helping our community, I'd like to see us do as broad a scope as we can. And I don't know how you all feel about that, I would love to hear some feedback on that. Anybody?
And if I could jump in real quick, the Economic Development Strategic Partner Committee or Plan Committee that Kevin spoke to you about last month is meeting in early June, and that's specifically what they're looking at, is jobs, job training, where industries are going, and trying to make a determination or assist our population, our residents for jobs. So I just want to give you a heads up on that.
Is it possible to sit in on that?
It's a, I think it's a public meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to, yeah, definitely. I really appreciate you bringing this up, Deputy Mayor Rigby, because, yeah, I mean, the economy is people, right? Buying, consuming, selling. And so when we have such a significant portion of our population that does not have any means to participate in the economy, we're going to see repercussions of that one way or another. And so I really do appreciate you bringing this up because it is a very crucial topic that I think we could probably have a whole discussion on by itself. I am 100% in favor of any kind of idea that we can come together with, with consensus and putting, you know, something together for our resident, they could see, hey, there's job retraining, there's, this business is hiring, you know, maybe help with resumes, something like that. So I just want to say, I don't know what it is that we can do, but this is a topic that I think needs to get flushed out even more because we're not going to see a decrease in unemployment anytime soon. I mean, I know that we're, you know, cruising through phase two into phase three and all that and reopening, but I've talked to so many people who just aren't even comfortable going into a restaurant at this point, right? And so, and then some of our restaurants are really small, and it's like, when you're looking at 25% capacity, what is that, one table? You know, so, yeah, I just think that whatever it is that we could do to just make it easier for our residents to get connected to workforce again, we have to do that. I don't have any recommendations at this point, but, you know, I would love for us to maybe discuss this and have some staff recommendations put forward as to what we can do to really make a dent into our unemployment numbers. But again, just I really appreciate you bringing this topic up. Thank you so much.
I'm thinking that 81, that's pretty much the business park that we're, isn't it?
I'm thinking that eight, eight one, that that's pretty much the business park that we're, isn't it? Isn't that where most of the unemployment is, is in the business park? Is that?
Correct, that's right.
So anybody else? So hearing none.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so is that something that we can have brought back to us to talk about? How we can implement maybe a couple of extra links on our webpage for the COVID outreach page?
So right now we have a couple, as I mentioned, the, the San Diego, or the Vista Economic Development Strategic Plan. We also have the strategic, uh, San Diego Workforce Partnership, excuse me, and Innovate 78, which has links to different sector, job sectors and uh, folks that hire people and where they're located. Currently, I believe we have all three of those on our website and um,
Okay.
Just to, if you'd like us to explore more, we'd be happy to do that.
No, I just want to make sure that they're on our website and that they're accessible and they can see them. Cause I know sometimes we get complaints that our website is not really user friendly for people. Uh, so I just wanted to, to see.
Well, the link, so the LinkedIn of eight 78 is there, uh, San Diego Workforce Partnership. And then we'll make sure that once the Economic Development Strategic Plan Committee meets, um, we'll make their product available as well.
And then when we do the special edition of our Vista, we can put something in there funneling people to that website and the links available also.
Absolutely.
Going to be looking at people with businesses, but we need people to work the businesses.
Yes, we can do that.
And then in, in, I'm just going to go right back to this again. The incident of suicides and mental health impact for this has been incredibly high. So if we're going to do a, a special edition of our Vista, I would like to see if it's not possible to get somebody from perhaps our county health department in the psychology, um, department to maybe put together an article that can go in that same issue to talk about mental health and ways that people, coping mechanisms and resources for people to call if they find themselves in need, either for themselves or family members. So if we, if we couldn't just put something in there as well, I would, I think that would be great because we are seeing some of these incidents on the rise right now. So that was a concern as well. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for having a discussion and being open to having the conversation. I appreciate it. When I put this on, like I said, it's not quite the direction I thought it would go, but I do appreciate that we are opening even slowly, but we are opening and we are going to find our normal. Again, we will have not new normal, we'll be normal again. So I thank you all and I thank everybody out there who was willing to talk to me. I've talked to business owners, I've talked to churches, I've talked to community members. And I want to say thank you to everybody out there who is open and willing to have that conversation. Thank you all.
And, and if I could just add on our website, there's also a section for mental health and wellness. And we can do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we have to take another little short recess to offer public comment. Um, to receive them, comments can be mailed to publiccomments@cityavista.com. So, um, we'll take a brief three minute recess. Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Okay, we're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comment on this item is now closed. Our city clerk Valdez, can you share any public comments we received?
We just received one earlier from Mary Jo Poole that was already submitted to you and she did not ask for it to be read.
Okay, so, um, I, I don't know that, I don't know that there was a motion here that we would need to vote on. I, we had a discussion, but, um, I don't know that there is a motion. Does somebody help clarify that for me?
Yep, one was put forward.
Okay, okay, so then with that, um, are we ready? Anybody have any further comments on this or are we ready to move on maybe? I don't see any, so I guess we're okay. So then we'll move on to oral communications. And, um, do we have any, um, oral communications this evening?
Yes, I do have two oral communication streams. The first is from Richard Wilder, Honorable Mayor J. Ritter and distinguished councilperson and Deputy Mayor Amanda Rigby and other venerable council members, Karina Contreras, Joe Green, Joe, John B. Franklin. All five of you have had another month, almost six in total now, to call, email, text, send a wire, pound on drums, send smoke signals, or perhaps since presumably you are adhering to the shielding in place due to the COVID-19 virus. Me if you could have used unneeded commute time to take pen in hand and actually write to me. I'm not currently impressed with any of you, not one, which is truly a sad day to be sure. As it seemed at the onset, two of you were to work with me. You do realize you're supposed to be my representative, my advocate, correct? Or have I somehow got the understanding of your duties wrong? Is this lack of responses what passes for certain of your constituents in the modern day age? A usurping of my first amendment right to wit, the right to petition government or redress grievances is the right to make a complaint to or seek assistance of one's government without fear of punishment or reprisals. And reprisals is all I have been given thus far. Extra hoops, more permits, more engineering, extra costs, time, weeks of drawing inspections and costing extra fees, $216, $216 and 2 cents too. I seek to have an appeal process instituted as you currently have none, for among other things, fees levied on elderly, disabled and veterans in our city and for the waiving, refunding of all plan check and permitting fees utilizing a new to the city first amendment right and in this case, compliance to the exclusionary rules provided by the IRS. On the VUSD side, the Education Code 17620 C2 states, the subpar, this subparagraph does not authorize the imposition of a levy, charge, dedication or other requirement against residential construction, regardless of resulting increase in accessible space. If that construction qualifies for exclusion set forth in subdivision A of Section 74.3 of the Revenue and Taxation Code. Section 74.3 of the Taxation and Revenue Code B states, for purposes of this section, a severely impaired or disabled person is any person who has a physical disability or impairment, whether from birth or by reason of accident or disease, the results in a functional limitation as to employment or substantially limits one or more major life activities for that person. And that has been diagnosed as permanently affecting the person's ability to function, including but not limited to any disability or impairment that affects sight, speech, hearing or the use of any limbs. So the idea, appeals, is not new as shown by the VUSD addressing and instituting the issue. I would like this issue placed on the calendar and addressed in session soonest. I'm willing to be a citizen advocate to help in the preparation and installation of this process. I need to see if there are any reporters interested in this breach of duty and the thwarting of the Bill of Rights. Between you all, VUSD, VUSD and Home Depot, I'm thinking of starting a senior disabled veteran nonprofit for the sole purpose of corrections, protections thereof. As it seems our leaders, note small l, are not advocating for us as they are elected to do so. With any all due respect deserved, thank you for listening, if indeed any of you actually were.
Who was the gentleman's name again?
Richard Wilder. And you received this email, um, as well, so you have a copy. And then the next is from Peggy Walker. Dear Mayor and Council, thank you for your careful focus on safe environments during the COVID pandemic. I am happy to hear at the last meeting of the reopening of Vista's hazardous waste center. With this center in mind, here's something else for you to consider. It's a new evolving hazardous waste situation regarding e-cigarette products. The skyrocketing, skyrocketing e-sig use, the teen vaping epidemic and more marijuana businesses on the horizon, this issue deserves attention. Schools especially, but other public entities as well, are dealing with unforeseen consequences of a dangerous waste stream coming from e-cigarette product use, including e-liquid containers and cartridges or pods that contain liquid nicotine and marijuana and toxic chemicals, lithium, neon batteries and disposable e-sigs. All are considered hazardous wastes under the Federal Resource Conservation Recovery Act. Schools and other places that accumulate these products need to dispose of them with compliance, in compliance with local, state and federal hazardous, hazardous waste disposal requirements. I appreciate your attention to helping schools understand how best to dispose of these hazardous waste products and the city to understand how to deal with the disposal of these items in other public places in order to protect the environment. Thank you. Again, Peggy Walker, Public Health Educator. And that's it for oral communication.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda are remarks. Just, just the short remarks today. Um, yesterday was Memorial Day. I want to take this moment to honor and remember our veterans and our, and those who made the ultimate act of sacrifice while serving our country. We pay our respects to every man and woman who responded to the call of duty and gave their life to protect our way of life. We also honor these heroes' memories and we pay tribute to their families. So I'd like to also acknowledge all of our veterans and our, the men and women who serve our country around the world currently and are here in the United States promoting freedom and democracy and fighting terrorism. Although we were unable to host our traditional Memorial Day ceremony with the American Legion and the veterans of foreign wars, I hope you've all seen the beautiful, large American flag that has been placed on the Civic Center, as well as the flags lining Main Street that were placed by the North San Diego Young Marines. I want to thank you all who assisted with these placements. It was very much appreciated and I love the flags on Main Street when they're down there and the, and the big flag. And I think Public Works has a lot to do with the big flag and I want to thank Public Works for everything they do to make our community look better and all, all that they do and just keeping things working well in our city, that they're very well respected. So that is my remarks and I will go on down the line with everybody. Deputy Mayor Rigby, I'll go with you next. I, I think you muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted just to say also, uh, the flag on Civic Center, I look forward to that every year and I appreciate very much that it's there. I took a walk around downtown yesterday and took lots of pictures of all the flags and it was a nice breezy day. So the flags were all, uh, fully flying and, uh, it really is beautiful. And I wanted to say a special thank you and a shout out to our Eagle Young Marines for taking care of that. I'm glad to see that even in this particular situation, they went out and they did that for us because it really is a beautiful sight and it's very, very much appreciated. But one of the, one of the things I noticed on my walk, um, was on Rotary, Rotary Lane where we have the, the black marble, marble or granite, um, the medallions for each of the branches of the military. Um, we need to make room for our newest branch, we now have Space Force. So, um, one of the verbiage on it says, um, something about leading into, uh, honoring our, our past, our present and our future. And it just seems that the Space Force emblem, which has now been created, it was announced last week, uh, would fit right under where it says, "And the Future." So, um, I just want to say thank you to everybody. There were a lot of people out yesterday getting ready for opening, uh, today. So thank you to everybody that I talked to. Thank you for the businesses and, and what you're doing for people. And thank you to everybody who reached out and who participates in the life of our city. You are very, very much appreciated. And thank you to staff, as always, you do a great job for us.
Councilmember Franklin.
Uh, I would just echo, uh, what the Deputy Mayor said. I really appreciate staff and, and all the ideas that they collected and all the hard work they're doing behind the scenes right now, uh, while we're in this state of emergency. Uh, I really do appreciate you and, and all the ideas that you've come up with and the time you've invested in it. We appreciate you, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I just, uh, want to definitely say that I love the patriotism that was on display, uh, in Vista for Memorial Day. The flags on Main Street were great. It was actually my first time watching them be put up. And I was unaware that they go out, they put them up, they salute them, they stand at attention, they walk away. It gives me chills even saying it, just the pride that I have in my country and the pride that they have and showed in our country. And it, it just resonates when you drive downtown. So if you haven't been yet, check it out, it's pretty awesome. So I want to thank the young Marines. There was also an 11,000 square foot flag that everybody probably saw on the news. Uh, one of our local business owners, TJ Crossman, is on the board at the Antique Gas and Steam Museum. And, uh, they built the big 11,000 square foot flag and taps was played at 7:30 on Memorial Day. And it was just beautiful, man. I mean, and a measurable amount of gratitude goes out to all those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice and their families that deal with it every day, uh, after the event. So, um, that was amazing to just see Vista come together and, you know, everything was so positive. Just, uh, the, the love that kind of poured out of our city on Memorial Day for everyone who has served and our fallen soldiers was amazing. Um, lastly, I want to echo the sentiments of my, uh, council members on staff. Public Works Week was awesome. I actually got to go hang out with my Kiwanis Club and feed them some unhealthy food and cheer them on like they were superstars when they were going to fix our streets in Vista. So, uh, Public Works Week was awesome. I appreciate our Public Works, they work so hard. And lastly, Kevin Hamm, uh, worked super hard, man. 270 businesses, what he didn't say is he probably talked to all 270 businesses himself, uh, in getting that type of information for us to have, to make decisions for our community is a huge thing. So, uh, shout out to everybody and it's amazing to work with all of you on my council. The perspective you guys bring to help run the city, uh, is spectacular and I'm lucky to work with you and our city's lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues, uh, you know, I hope everybody had a blessed Memorial Day. I, I look forward to when we can give it a proper celebration, right? A recognition of the lives lost, um, and so many, uh, individuals that have given the ultimate sacrifice for us to keep living that we do, keep enjoying, uh, the freedoms that we have and, uh, the ability for us to, uh, pursue our dreams. So, so much to our community and we have such a large, um, military presence here. So I know that, uh, the acts that the city, uh, took in, in, and, uh, the Antique Gas and Steam Museum, I mean, it beautiful, it was absolutely beautiful. And again, I look forward to when we can have, uh, a proper, uh, recognition, uh, in person.
And again, I look forward to when we can have a proper recognition in person. Other than that, the trash is getting really bad, the litter is getting so bad. I'm going to be talking to my team captain for our little pick-up crew because we just, both of us are just texting back and forth all the time, like, did you see this? And I think we might, we might be getting to the point where we're going to bring the group back, but I got to figure out how to do it safely, because the trash is just, one, it's unacceptable, so please, people, it doesn't take that long to dispose of trash the proper way, in a receptacle. I know we have them all around Vista, so please use them. But yeah, I look forward to getting streets burning, burning some calories and picking up all this trash, but just got to figure out how to do it safely. But outside of that, I think we had a really good discussion today, and I really appreciate, you know, the collaboration. We come from so many different places ideologically, background, all that, and for us to come together and have a collaborative way to engage with one another and move forward what we think as a consensus is best for Vista. I think it really resonates with our residents. When I talk to people, you know, they like to see us working together and working on these common ground issues, which now we have even more because of the COVID situation. So I thank you again to staff for providing us the tools that we need as a council to be able to be effective in our decision-making. And I hope everybody enjoys the rest of their day, and again, just thank you so much. I really appreciate all the hard work.
City Attorney. City manager first. Sorry, Patrick.
No problem. Daryl, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your kind comments on staff. Staff works very hard to provide services to the public, and some are visible, like Kevin, and others aren't as visible, but still working very hard behind the scenes, so we appreciate your support. So thank you.
I got stuck looking at the ice cream cone coming out of my head. Attorney Daryl Hyfer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the council's sentiments on Memorial Day and all of the sacrifices that we need to celebrate that has given us this wonderful country.
About our city clerk.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.